I'm Paul Lewis. Nice to meet you, Brad. President of the Architectural League, Principal at LTL Architects and a Professor at Princeton School of Architecture. And so it's a great pleasure to kind of welcome you and introduce you, Brad Lander. You're a second-term City Council member, first elected in 2009, representing the 39th District of Brooklyn. And prior to your election at City Council, you were a community planner and housing advocate, spending about 15 years, if I'm not mistaken, in the nonprofit sector as the Director of the Pratt Center for Community Development and the Fifth Avenue Committee, where you helped create, among other things, 500 units of affordable housing, job training programs, and so forth. So I'm just going to jump right into it. And Brad, you've made a kind of vision or put forward a vision of a just and durable recovery as a centerpiece for your campaign for Controller. And given the COVID challenges to the city's budgets and the opportunities that crises often make available to us all, can you articulate what are the key components of your vision and how the Office of Controller can be leveraged to produce that vision?
Thank you so much, Paul, and Nad, and Rosalie, and all of you for rising early this morning. I'm really excited for this conversation. You know, sometimes you're like boasting in these things where you say, "This is the thing I've focused on the most." But I do think certainly of all the Controller candidates this cycle, and it's not impossible, honestly, of all the Controller candidates, since maybe like Andrew Haswell-Green, who was the father of consolidation, that I spent more time thinking about the way to deploy the tools of the Controller's Office in relationship to infrastructure and the built environment. You know, that just sort of builds on my background and history. As you said, before I was in the City Council, I spent 15 years running two nonprofit organizations, 10 years at the Fifth Avenue Committee, a community development organization, which was the start of my relationship to the Gowanus Canal, which I hope we'll spend a little time talking about and the work we're doing there to try to envision, in some ways, what I'm thinking of as the first fair housing rezoning and one that is really thoughtful about what it means to rezone a low-lying flood-prone area in relationship to the climate crisis in the next 100 years, as well as developed and preserved lots of units of affordable housing. And then I spent five years at the Pratt Center for Community Development in the period after 9/11. You know, I was there from 2003 to 2009, working with people in the wake of the sort of upsurge in planning that came out of that period of time and listening to the city and some of that other work. So the thoughts of how do you engage New Yorkers thoughtfully in conversations about the built environment and tether them to some attention to the needs of the city's long-term future and its values are really deep. And at this moment, what we have is a pretty polarized conversation, in my opinion, a pretty thin conversation about those issues, the dynamics and tension around gentrification have meant it's pretty hard to engage New Yorkers thoughtfully on the most important long-term questions of how we're gonna build and sustain and invest in a city in the face of climate change, in the face of the affordability and inequality crisis, in the face of aging infrastructure, and now in the face of COVID and the need for a just and durable recovery, all of which I just think are incredibly critical. For the last 12 years now in the City Council, I've focused on a wide range of issues at the intersection of a more just and equal city, a more sustainable city, and a government that works better. That's really where I've tried to focus. So I help bring participatory budgeting to New York City as a way to say, "People want more involvement in deciding on investments in their neighborhood. We need more transparency and delivery in government, and we've got to be thinking together about these issues." Done a lot of work on sustainability and climate, from the plastic bag ban to the Climate Modernization Act for retrofitting our buildings, a lot of work on trying to build a more equal economy, raising pay and giving stable schedules to fast-food workers, the minimum pay law for Uber and Lyft drivers, a great bill called the Freelances and Free Act, which protects freelancers from wage theft, first of its kind in the country. Together with Jumanji Williams, I passed the Community Safety Act to confront stop-and-frisk and promote police reform. And one of the things I'm proudest of is the work in District 15 on school integration. You know, the school district that I'm in has Park Slope and Red Hook and Sunset Park and Kensington, and we realized the district is as diverse as the city, and yet the schools were as segregated as anywhere. And we took some bold steps, led by a community planning process. WXY Studio led the community planning work that DOE and I brought them in on, in a way that opened people up to a real bold set of changes that have integrated the District 15 middle schools with a model that is increasingly being looked at to use citywide. So, and then finally, in the Council, I've been the greatest champion for focusing on capital projects management reform and being more thoughtful about infrastructure investments in parks, at DOT, at EDC. And I passed a bill a year and a half ago to require a capital projects, universal capital projects tracking system. You know, a decade ago, when I brought participatory budgeting in New York City, after the first year, I thought it would be easy to show people where the projects were, what was going on, are they on budget, are they on time, when are they coming? And lo and behold, it was almost impossible to let people know where any of those projects were in the pipeline once they voted for them. So we started doing one in our own district, just so everyone would know, and every project we funded, and it took a while, but I finally built the political power and got the administration to agree to create a universal capital projects tracking system that they're working on now that will put all the projects in one place and both enable the public to have some transparency, but also to do some meaningful comparisons about why the bathrooms the Parks Department is building are costing more than or taking longer than the bathrooms that the SCA is building, and what do we do to try to get a better working system? And from that, I built out a plan for investing smarter in our infrastructure that really is a centerpiece of what I want to do as Controller. And I'll end here. I mean, I'm glad to talk about each of the functions of the Controller's Office in pension fund investments, as signing off on contracts, as Chief Fiscal Officer, as the issuer of the public finance of the bonds that fund municipal infrastructure and could do it in a greener, I think, and more creative way. And then finally, as Chief Accountability Officer of our agencies. But the investing in our infrastructure plan is just a good example. You know, that's a system that needs overhaul. The system we have for assessing the state of the infrastructure, the annual AIMS, our Ames Report, is like an enormous, as constructed, waste of time. It's an urgent thing to do to assess the infrastructure. That report does not get it done. So like, we need to overhaul the assessment of the infrastructure. We need to change the planning process so that the 10-year capital strategy is actually a thoughtful strategic plan for infrastructure that's actually connected to the capital budget and not just an exercise that bears almost no relationship to it. We need the contracting process to work smoother, and then we need implementation of capital projects to be smarter, and all of that has to be done with an eye on climate and on equity. The Controller, what I think the next Controller can do is try to leverage, right now, you don't get the contracts till the very end. You're the last person to get them. The Controller has always waited until every other step is done, even to start looking at the contracts. And so you can just like raise your hands up and try to reject an individual contract, but in ways that have not produced much. So what I want to do is go proactively to the next mayor at the beginning and say, "I'm not looking to hold you up on random individual contracts for headlines. We need to work together to reinvent this system. Let's roll up our sleeves and here's some concrete ideas for how to get it done." So I'm excited to talk to you about a whole lot of things, but that's one I'll just drop in the chat, because I do think that's the plan that's maybe gotten the least attention, but maybe is, in the long term, one of the most important.
Yeah. No, I will say that one of the things that I found very impressive about your website is the sheer quantity of things that you thought about and you put out there. In fact, it's like a lot of, a lot of things. So I'm curious just if you can build upon the, you know, you've been working in so many different arenas within the public sphere, with housing, et cetera. What are the particular kind of, like, why is Controller useful? Like, how do you, why do you move from a Council member, I mean, obviously, term limits, but you're moving into, what are your, how do you see your agency shifting? What are the things you think you can really get out of the Controller's Office to advance some of the things that have been in your mind for many years now?
That's a great question. Two things, I guess, I'll say here. First, you know, I'm a progressive. You know, I want government to do big, bold things. I want us to be able to deliver a more equal, a more affordable, a more just city. But it's very clear to me that government can't play that role, can't deliver on any of its promises, when people don't trust it, when they don't believe it's telling the truth, when there's not a focus on real capacity to deliver, when there's not accountability for mismanagement, when corruption goes unchecked. Like, and it's doubly true, because both government can't deliver on its promises just when it's not delivering on them, and then when people don't trust it, don't believe it, then they won't invest in it to do more. And I've tried in the Council to link those two things, to push for big, significant changes and to demand that government work better. And the Controller's Office is a great place to do that. The biggest bureau is the Audits Bureau. It's all about making government work better and being strategic in how to do that. You know, if the audits are just like reports that get a one-day news headline, that doesn't accomplish anything, but it's possible to be strategic. So that intersection between progressive values and government capacity is a really good place, thing to focus on in the Controller's Office. And then the second thing I'd say, and you know, this, I think, will speak especially to a lot of you, is the Controller's Office is the one place in government, or one of the few places in government, that has an assignment to take the long-term view. Our politics mostly are short-term in their thinking. You know, elected officials are thinking at longest about the next election cycle and usually about the news cycle or the Twitter cycle. Like, it just, we haven't, democracy does some things very well, but it doesn't think about the long-term well. It just is a short-term enterprise. And the Controller's Office is assigned in so many ways to think about the long-term. You're the pension fiduciary, so you're thinking about the retirement security of public-sector workers a couple of decades down the road. You do the public finance and bond underwriting, so those are, you know, 20 or 25 or 30-year obligations. And that really appeals to me. I mean, climate is the most powerful and compelling example. Like, it's straightforward that if you're thinking, "What's the biggest risk facing our city," or "The biggest set of risks facing our city in the long term," it's not hard to see that the climate crisis encapsulates, you know, most of them or the biggest ones of them. We didn't see the COVID crisis coming, so we're paying the cost in tens of thousands of the lives of our neighbors in very unequal ways. We could all see the climate crisis coming, and yet our democracy, our system, isn't very good at getting ready for it, at preparing, at doing everything we can to mitigate. And this is an office, like, assigned to the task of approaching it differently, and I find that really compelling.
But is there, do you have any anxiety about the fact that so much of your role will be a kind of audit after the fact, a kind of, you know, not proactive, but almost kind of reactive? Like, how do you position progressive politics in the context of a kind of an audit agency?
Yeah, it's a great question. I will say, you know, the Controller's tools range, so that, you know, on climate, the pension funds, a quarter trillion dollars of investment, which the Controller is not the sole decision-maker for, but one of the drivers of, is really meaningful. You have enforcement powers on living and prevailing wage, but you're right, the vast majority of the office is an oversight office, is an audit office, is, you know, opine on the budget office. So that just means you have to be really strategic in how to use it. It is easy to do audits that don't make any difference. You know, like, that's not hard to do. Like, you produce an audit, did everyone fill out their travel vouchers, or just pick up a criticism that's already in the press and then double down on it, and maybe you get a nice headline, but it doesn't make any change. But yeah, it's much harder to say, "How do we use the audit functioning capacity to actually make government work better?" And I guess what I'd say is, like, I really love that kind of public-sector problem-solving and thinking about how to make the audits actually work. So a couple of examples. You know, sometimes you can actually find a Commissioner or a Deputy Mayor who shares that goal, you know? And I'll say that Scott Stringer and Steve Banks have actually built a nice relationship. It's the one place I can find in this administration over the last two terms where it's clear a couple of times, they've talked in advance of an audit, picked an area they both knew needed to improve. Scott then dug in and did an audit, and Steve, at the end, as the agency leader, said, "We're gonna implement the recommendations here and really make change." So some of it is thoughtful relationship-building and finding partners. But that's not always gonna work, because unfortunately, mayors can be pretty thin-skinned and aren't interested in another independent elected official saying what they think needs to change. But even there, you could be creative and give them opportunities for wins. So I want to create an accessibility audit team, both around disability access and around language access. And there, what I'd like to do is start by crowdsourcing and saying, "Hey, folks, where are the agencies that you're having problems accessing?" And then go to those agencies and say, "All right, here's a facility that people are saying they need access to that they can't get into, or, you know, here's a place where some set of people, the Bangladeshi families are having a hard time accessing, the Administration for Children's Services, we're gonna give you nine months or a year. We're not gonna do the audit today and do a gotcha. We're gonna let you know, I'm coming a year from now. Fix this problem, and I'll give you a good grade, and we'll celebrate that we make government work better together." Like, that's a model for using the audit power to make government work better through strategic and kind of creative action. And look, sometimes then you have to team up with activists or stakeholders on the outside. So if we're trying to fix a broken contracting system, that's a place where it's easy to do an audit and show all the ways that we're paying people too slow, that the contracting process takes too long, but it'd be better to have gone into that in conversation with stakeholders who are trying to change that system and be part, you still have to do the audit independently, but you could be part of a broader campaign to make change strategically.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit about a particular agency that some of us have connections with, the DDC. And you've been critical of the DDC's cost overruns and the excesses.
Although I might be Jamie Torres Stringer's biggest public praiser also, so anyway.
So I'm just, I'm, I guess you've argued for the formation of a new Deputy Mayor for Infrastructure, but I'm curious what you think specifically are the most important changes needed at the DDC, and maybe how does the Deputy Mayor kind of engage that?
Great. Yeah, so I will say, I'm a big fan of both Lorraine Grillo and Jamie Torres Stringer, and I think the things they have done in the last, what is it, year and a half, two years, have actually, are actually largely on track. You know, before that, I think, in the first part of the de Blasio administration, there was a lot of excitement about good design. And I mean, I love good design, so I really love it, but what government needs to do is actually have a system that's functional, and if government is doing competitions for design that the Architectural League should be doing, while it can't assess its infrastructure in a regular way, and it can't get the contracts issued, and every single change order has to be, you know, go through the recontracting process, maybe that's where I should focus. So I do feel like what Jamie and Lorraine came in and did has been really good at DDC, and I think a lot of what she had implemented at SCA. So, you know, that's a set of kind of basic agency improvements, which I think are great. But at the broader systems level, I think there's a couple of problems that we have. One is that DDC doesn't have some of the contracting superpowers that EDC and the SCA have. So it just seems kind of backwards to do the lion's share of the public design and construction contracting in an agency that is more hamstrung, you know, more tied up than EDC and SCA, which I think have both been able to use state authority powers in thoughtful ways without jeopardizing corruption, and yet are able to move some things more quickly, which is why a ton of public agencies, if they can, venue shop and try to have EDC manage their, manage their projects. So one is just to like, look at that, does it make sense to do some, to give DDC those powers? And then second, you know, the idea of the Deputy Mayor is pretty simple. It's got two parts. Right now, there is no official in government shy of the mayor to whom all the capital projects and all the capital agencies report. You know, because SCA comes up through the first Deputy Mayor, and then the DDC agencies through the, through DDC. There's just no one looking at the whole system except for OMB. And OMB doesn't really do the management part of management and budget. OMB's job is to try to spend less. And, you know, we saw this during COVID. They used the COVID crisis to unnecessarily overpause and too-long pause a ton of projects just to try to like, pull less cash out the door. And I'm like, that's not, like, that's their job. I'm not critical of them. There's no one in city government whose job is to look across the totality of the city's infrastructure and capital project spending and say, "How are we doing? What are we doing right that should be moved in other agencies? What could we do in a more coordinated and strategic way? How do we connect our land use planning and where we're going to be building infrastructure and our investments and where we get the money for it? And how the agencies are managing capital projects? And how we do more thoughtful and resilient, you know, design? All these things, like, there's no place in government for that. DDC can do it on a handful of projects, but then you've got separate capital work going on out of EDC, out of SCA. And anyway, so that was the, that's the idea behind both having one universal capital projects tracking system, which would at least let everybody see it all transparently, and then having somebody in government whose job it is to kind of look out across that whole system and help make it work more effectively.
Yeah, I want, Paul, could I jump in with this one?
Please, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I appreciate that answer, and I think to dig in a little further with a specific, and Elizabeth Glazer's on the call and asked this question once.
Hooray. Hi, Liz.
But I do, I think it touches on what we've seen. I appreciate the answer before. I think as designers, you know, in the trenches with DDC, SCA, DASNE, and others, I think one of the struggles we all, we've all found is with the budget setting to begin with on a lot of these projects, that we're sort of given projects that just have a false budget to begin with, and then it's seen as, you know, the designers and construction team have failed because there just was no real there there to begin with. So the question Elizabeth asked, which is specific, obviously, to a critical project in the city, one way or the other, no matter your views, and I'll just read it real quick. "The city has allocated approximately $8.5 billion in capital dollars to build four borough jails by 2027. While the building jails are a complicated and expensive project, some have suggested the city's procurement process, the agency which supervises the process, as you just mentioned, Brad, and other factors unnecessarily inflate costs without encouraging design creativity. Are these costs out of line with what approach and what approach should the city take to reduce the cost while boosting quality of the project?"
Yeah. All right, there's so much here. I want to try to figure out how to do it, do it briefly. First, I'll say, you know, yeah, on this issue that, you know, the projects, like, a random guess is made at what the cost for Council members, this is especially infuriating. You want to do a project in your district, you go to the Borough Parks Commissioner or the DOT Borough Commissioner and say, "We'd like to get this done." They just randomly make up a number for you, and then you put that number in the budget, and then lo and behold, as soon as someone spends five minutes actually figuring out what the project is, they're like, "Well, that's not gonna be enough money." But you can allocate more money for a year. So now you've just lost a year, and all the people that are excited about the project are mad at you, and that is a just ridiculous way of doing things. And then, like, in that, in my experience, that was because, like, it wasn't even that you got really a very good budget estimate, like, the Parks Commissioner was just like, "I don't know, $600,000." And then as soon as OMB starts to look at it or DDC looks at it. So, yes, so the front-end planning the DDC is doing is helping a lot on the small handful of projects it's working on, and that should be done on a much broader scale. I am open to, I don't have a, an answer specifically on, should it all be more concentrated or should there be flexibility across agencies? I actually think there can be usefulness in having some, you know, some different project management approaches, as long as you're really evaluating them. On the jails, this one is hard because it was so driven by the politics, right? Like, a decision was made to try to put the whole ULP together in one political package and to try to make a vote on closing Rikers out of the ULP action to build the new jails. And that just led to just a ton of, of less-than-what-you'd-want process, because each of those wasn't able to be designed thoughtfully, because they were all in a big political process. And so on the one hand, you have this citywide fight about what should our approach be to criminal justice, and on the other hand, you have these just neighborhood fights, which were largely NIMBY fights. And the chance to actually be thoughtful about the facilities, like, there was a desire to be creative and thoughtful, but that was just the last priority in that system. So that one's hard, because really, the policy decision should have been made first. Like, the policy decision, "We're gonna close Rikers and build smaller, smaller borough-based jails," should have been made as a policy decision that didn't try to wrap the design and contracting altogether in it. So you then could have gone out and done contracting procurement and design and planning for each individual facility in a way that would have been, you know, more able to be thoughtful about what those facilities were and how to design them more effectively for cost. So, yeah, and those, that's an example of something that then winds up costing more because it takes so much longer, is clunky, doesn't deliver something that's kind of either as creative as or cost-effective as you want.
Let's, let me shift to housing, and I apologize, Zoom is trying to erase me slowly. I'm not, I think it's tired of looking at me, so, but let's talk about housing. You've been very critical of past, the city's past relationship with developers, the boondoggle, as you claim, of the tax, you know, the tax 421A tax breaks, and arguing for the need for, you know, 150,000 units of affordable housing, and also the need for a new model of kind of social, kind of ownership housing models. I wonder if you could kind of expand on that and, and how do we get this to happen, given what you started, what you stated at the beginning about the kind of fears of gentrification and all the kind of complexities associated with housing?
Yeah. Absolutely. So, you know, on the one hand, there have been a few lovely examples within the system that we have, like Villa Verde in the Bronx, and there's, you know, some, all of you have done, you know, projects that are worth being proud of. But, but at scale, when I came into the affordable housing system in the early, not right at the beginning of the era of community development, but still early enough in it, that there was some room to kind of be thoughtful and creative. Not everything was driven by, "Okay, we paid top dollar for this piece of land, and we gotta get every penny out of it." You know, in that earlier era, when we were still in kind of the wake of the city's abandonment crisis, you both had nonprofit community development groups, you have this sort of remembrance of things like Mitchell Lama, and you had a spirit of community development that meant, yes, we needed to get projects built, they had to be built effectively, they had to pencil out, you know, you wanted some mix of incomes, but you could be a little more thoughtful and creative about a lot of things. And I feel like as the city then, you know, through the 90s and into the 2000s, rebounded and started booming, and land became so expensive, for-profit developers buy the land, and now 80% of the subsidy, the subsidies for affordable housing go to for-profit private developers, you know, some of whom are lovely people and very good friends of mine, but who especially once they're doing it on a piece of ground that they paid top dollar for, don't have as much room to think about what's the depth of affordability that's needed, how are we thinking creatively about design and kind of the long-term issues? And especially, how do we invest people with shared ownership? I mean, almost everything we do now is rental, and there's no room for working-class or middle-class families through our public subsidy programs to become part owners of our city, which we just know is so important. So, yes, I wanna, I wanna pull it back. I'm not pushing private developers out of our affordable housing system. I think we need an inclusionary program. I fought hard to create the mandatory inclusionary program, and it is not perfect, but I want private developers contributing to housing affordability. But on every stitch of city-owned land, I want that treated like a, like something sacred, where we have ground, we need to maximize public value and keep it permanent, and I don't know why we're selling off 75% of it to something that gets privatized, that is privatized, and then not a public asset over time. So 100% of the public land, just 50% of the subsidies. Right now, it's 80% to for-profit private developers. I'd say just 50/50 between for-profit developers and various social housing assets, land trusts, supportive and affordable housing nonprofits, things like Mitchell Lama. And then there's still room on the 80, you know, whatever, 90% of our residential land is privately owned, so most of what gets developed is still gonna be built by for-profit developers. But if we increase the footprint, I'd like to double the footprint of social housing from about 10% of New York City's residential stock and mostly NYCHA to 20%, and mostly in community land trusts, nonprofits, and new forms of Mitchell Lama. And that would just be such a nice space for design creativity, for climate and resiliency creativity, and for envisioning a future of the city in the spaces where profit isn't the highest goal, and then everything else has to fall after. And that work is hard. I don't want to pretend like it's not hard. Doing social housing well is a real challenge, and having done it myself for 15 years and like, stayed up at night worrying about every one of the problems that you get, like, it's easy to hand-wave at. And I think sometimes the people who are like, "We love community land trusts," don't have any real thoughtfulness about what it would take to actually deliver a system. And obviously, the challenges at NYCHA are a great example of, like, what can go wrong if you put housing in public ownership, but without enough attention to the ongoing stewardship and like, you know, just responsiveness. It's not, but there's so many good examples in the European social housing sector that are being creative, are doing innovative design work, are delivering projects cost-accountably and are preserving it over time with a mix of rental and ownership. And I just, I really think that New York City, that's the way forward for New York City.
So what's, what do you see as being the biggest impediment or biggest challenge?
I mean, it, at the moment, I do think inertia is kind of the biggest challenge. Like, the fact that Bill de Blasio, with the exception of making voluntary inclusionary into mandatory inclusionary and making it a little more affordable, more or less kept the same housing policies that Mike Bloomberg and in a certain ways Rudy Giuliani had speaks to the ways in which our system is just pulling itself along. And like, if he just hadn't privatized the Bedford Armory, I feel like there's some ways in which his whole mayoralty might have, that's a little bit of an exaggeration, but like, that was just such a dumb fight. So, you know, to genuinely move to a thoughtful social housing model, we'd need a mayor that was committed to it, and I don't know whether we're gonna get that or not. Once you get it, if you wanted to do that, if you said, "Look, you know, broadly, the thing I just said in terms of, like, still plenty of room for the private sector, but a lot more attention to social..." in terms of like, still plenty of room for the private sector, but a lot more attention to social housing. Then the all that, there's a million instrumental challenges, like, you know, actually doing that work well and thoughtfully. But there's so many good models. Again, so many European cities have really good social housing infrastructure. We've got so much talent and so many creative people. Resources obviously will be a challenge, but with American Rescue Plan money and hopefully Biden Infrastructure Plan money. And the city actually, even in our borrowing, you don't want to be spending more than 15% of your annual operating budget on debt service for your long term infrastructure. But we're down below 12, we're between 11 and 12. So there is room here to to do this. And like, there'd be a million challenges of implementation. And you could certainly do it very poorly if you didn't have good people in, but we've got so much talent here. You you could do that well if you wanted to do it.
So I want to direct to a to a question from Daniel McPhee that comes in. And thank you for changing the conversation around responsible growth and asking wealthy neighbors to contribute further to essential infrastructure. I'm curious about how you believe the controller role gives you meaningful opportunity to comment on fair share and how you'd plan to work with local media and community organizers to hold the executive and council accountable to equity around unwanted infrastructure.
Thank you, Daniel. This is a whatever, a question I'm really passionate about. And I will start before I talk about the controller's role and just saying, one of the things I'm trying to do in my last year in the council is push a framework for more strategic, comprehensive, values driven kind of fair share and sustainability planning. And though I don't, uh, the the Planning Together document put out by, you know, by, I guess by the speaker, by one of my competitors in this race, but but drafted by my longtime policy director, Annie Annie Levers, is a, is a good effort to open this conversation. I don't think it's perfect. There's rooms to change it. Communities need some more engagement. But but it's a thoughtful effort to say, hey, folks, I I know you're like really focused on kind of what's in your neighborhood. But we all got to look up for one minute, like we can see that the seas are rising and the planet is warming and our infrastructure is aging and our city's not getting any more affordable. And the reactive process we have with almost no strategic or long term planning and and just looking at individual projects in this reactive way, which bring out usually not our kind of best selves, is not going to deliver for us. So how do we have a conversation about what our citywide goals are? And then what that means in my neighborhood, which I love and I'm anxious about change in. And I need to be persuaded I'm part of something bigger. That's not simple to do. I don't want to like Pollyanna it, but we have to set up some better process for doing it. Planning Together is an effort to start that conversation. We can look at it in different ways, but but I think we have to do something like that. And I'm going to keep fighting for it in the council. In the Controller's Office, I think the main place to do it is around infrastructure and capital spending. Because the Controller doesn't have a vote on the planning commission, doesn't have a role specifically in community based, uh, land use decision making. But so much of that does wind up being about infrastructure. Do we have the schools and transit that we need to sustain growth? You know, we've just long wanted a new park or a new community center in my neighborhood. And if we got that, that might be a fair, you know, kind of a fair trade. So the Controller has a real role there through, you know, underwriting the bonds that pay for it. And mostly just because no one is paying attention to the capital budget. If as controller, you really dig in and say, you know what that capital budget is? That's our infrastructure plan. That's our decision about public investment dollars and everything from parks to schools to open streets. I'm going to spend some real time engaging communities about the capital budget and talking about issues of fair share. You then open the door to these other questions about what responsible growth is, about what neighborhoods have to do their fair share. And of course, I'll just keep using my bully pulpit. I mean, I'm going to spend the rest of this term working on Gowanus. And I'm optimistic, knock wood, that we're going to be able to get it done. One thing there, we're making Gowanus, the, I've signed on to Jomani Williams bill that would require a racial impact statement on large scale U L R Ps. And even though that's not law yet, we've commissioned one on Gowanus. So Lance Freeman at Columbia is going to be putting out racial, the first racial impact statement on the Gowanus rezoning. And actually, it's, I mean, I got a kind of advanced peek at a draft. And I think it's really going to help make the case for like evaluating projects with an equity lens, seeing what that tells us, having that push us to do better. So I think that's another place where as controller, I'll, I'll keep, keep working.
So you you made a, I think you said somewhere that budgets are a moral, are moral documents, which is a really kind of beautiful phrase. So, um, and I'm curious if you could articulate a little bit more about what kind of morality you would wield with with the budget. And connected to that, given, um, you know, the revenue declines, the revenue side issues. What are your biggest worries about that over the next couple of years? And how does that connect to questions of morality on budgets?
All right. This one is really a hard question because it's a great phrase. But then when you start to dig in, it means a lot of things because, you know, one value is like those folks who are, you know, who have the least, who are the most in harm's way, or the most disenfranchised, who are the most vulnerable. You want to make sure you're doing more to invest in and lift up so that they have access to things everybody else has. So equity is a principle. But, you know, it's also true that investing in broadly shared effective public systems is a critical principle. Like the public schools have to work for everybody's kids and the public transit has to work for everyone. And so, you know, you want to bring an equity lens, but you also need to make public systems work better broadly so people have confidence in them. And sometimes those values compete with each other. And then the short term versus long term lens is extremely challenging because you you'd just like to spend all your money taking care of people now. But if you have a budget that's out of balance and you're not, you're spending more than you're taking in, in a few years, you're going to have an impossible problem and your city is going to, you know, not be able to borrow. You're not going to be able to invest in your long term projects and you're not going to be able to sustain the social safety net you build. So like, you know, those are all values, like, you know, be thoughtful about the long term. Don't eat your seed corn. Save for rainy day is a good value. Take care of the people who need it most is a value. Build public infrastructure that sustains a broad and growing and thriving city and makes room for new business creation and entrepreneurship. And there's no easy way to say, you can't choose one of those three. Those are all the kinds of morals or values and you don't get to just choose one over the others or you will, you will fail. So you have to be thoughtful and try to, as you're looking at each project, say, here's how we're bringing those questions that lends to these budget decision making. And, you know, last year I voted for most of the budgets in my time in the city council. Last year I thought we had a real opportunity to rethink policing. And in my opinion, we failed, you know, we just did not rise to it. And so this was the last time I voted no, because I thought last year's budget did not rise enough to that value that people were holding at the moment. Oh, the long term challenge. So first, let's remember that it's our work together. Those of you that like me did work to help make sure we win Georgia and win the White House and win the House and win the Senate. You know, imagining the world where John Ossoff and Reverend Warnock did not win and we weren't getting $14 billion from the federal government, like, let's just remember, that's politics. That's democracy. We did that. We saved our fiscal health through our political organizing. So these things are deeply bound up together. And boy, where we would be now without that is just frightening to think about. At the same time, that is a short term solution and not a long term one. That money is going to come in over about two and a half years. And we still have about a $4 billion deficit of expenses over revenues in the out years if we don't make some changes. And so we need to use this money in smart ways. First, we have to spend it on one time things, which is why infrastructure is such a good use for it. Because we can't hire new city personnel up against that or we'll blow that $4 billion deficit up even more. So that's why I proposed an American Rescue Plan spending tracker to make sure we know what we're getting for that money. We choose what goals and values and we make sure we're using one time money for one time uses and not creating long term obligations we can't sustain. And then in the long term, I think there's a few things we can do to really get at that $4 billion budget. I do want to look more thoughtfully at 421A. I don't think we're getting $1.7 billion worth of value from it. Now that will require reforming our property tax system because in some ways what 421A is doing is solving for the problem that developers just don't have predictability in property taxes. So let's get comprehensive property tax reform done. That will not be easy, but it's a good time to do it. And then as part of that, I think we can roll back 421A. And then, um, one thing I think is right now, the way that we are doing the PEG program, the program to eliminate the gap where commissioners get a certain amount or percentage every year they're supposed to cut, they really don't have incentives to be thoughtful about headcount because all the money on pension and healthcare and other post employment benefits are off their budget. And so what I'd like to do is sort of bring those things together and say to commissioners, okay, you, even in years where you might be growing something new, you know, you might be creating universal pre K or 3K or some new important mental health program, you still need to identify what parts of your agency you think might make sense to phase out over time, maybe through attrition. So we can control, just not let headcount keep growing and growing and growing. I think what happens in the city is like a program gets created, some people get hired. You wind up, maybe that was a really good idea in the short term, but then once you hire them, just when their spots become open, you keep rehiring and then you want to create a new program. And so we need something that says to commissioners, you can do new innovative things, but you're going to have to also be thoughtful about managing headcount through attrition rather than through, you know, than through layoffs. But but in a way that I think can manage headcount effectively and help us address that $4 billion deficit.
You have about five minutes. I was just going to jump in one sort of, and it's, you've touched on this in a lot of ways. And I'm going to ask a sort of very, uh, you know, sort of get down in the minutia for a second, just in terms of governance. You spent the last, you know, your, your time in the district with 154 constituents and a very specific, very diverse, but very specific body of folks that you were, you know, your job day to day was to work with them and persuade some of them and celebrate others. And and you now would pivot to a job with 800 staff members, you know, and your job becomes persuading all of them to do the work for you to support your vision on and so on. I I'm just curious because, you know, as as a just New Yorker and taxpayer, it's, it's a little opaque as to what those 800 people do. You've been in city government, you worked with Scott Stringer and his staff. Do you have confidence that that's something that's easy to switch one person in and out? Or or do you have concerns that with all these big plans, with a new mayor, with financial headwinds? Although you're right, I mean, happily, we, we are going to get some support that that you're going to be able to get in there and and start running right away? Or is that part of the process too, that you've looked at realistically in your planning? I just want to put you on the spot a bit and ask that question.
I haven't gotten this question before and it's maybe one of the best ones I, you know, I've done 100 of these or something. And I love this question. I mean, making government work better is really hard. You know, and I think when you're running for controller, you know, your incentives are to say, I know how to make government work better and I'm going to fix this and I'm going to fix that. I'm going to fix the other thing. And the people before me were knuckleheads and they didn't know what they were doing. And I know how to make it all work great. And like, the reality is, you know, whatever Max Weber calls it, the slow boring of hard boards, you know? It's, um, it is hard to make government work better and that'll be true in the Controller's Office as well. Most of those staff are civil servants, so you can, you know, you get to bring in a few of your new people with you in top of positions. But the the biggest bureau is the Audit Bureau, about 150 of the 700 plus people are the ones doing the audits every year and they're almost all civil servants. And they got a way of doing things. So if you want to shake up how the Audit Bureau is working, it's going to be real work. So, um, you can't just say, we're going to get rid of you and bring in some new whippersnappers. It wouldn't be right, but you can't do it even if you, even if you would want to. I mean, I think some of that is, you know, where you have an exciting vision that's also practical. So I mentioned those accessibility audit teams. I believe that there'll be five people out of those 150 who would be excited to be on a team that learned a lot about accessibility. And it's kind of two different things because language access is obviously different from physical access for people with disabilities. So maybe that's, you know, one team with two, you know, like, let's build out a practice where we really expand accessibility. And instead of just going and looking at the same agencies over and over again, we're going to try this new thing. So do I have to find a few people in that team that will do that? Yes. I think that's a great one. That's barely even ideological. And you can start to imagine how you'd make improvements and change. You know, climate's another area like that. I think it's possible for the Controller's Office to be a real hub for focusing the attention of New Yorkers on climate. And that's across a bunch of the different parts of the Controller's Office. And I believe there will be people in, you know, for that, you want a new leader who's coming in. That's really got some, you know, experience and expertise. But I think it'll be possible to find people in there who are excited about the goal. So that's sort of my model is like, pick a few things. And look, the other thing is when you're campaigning, you're going, you're saying, I'm going to do 47 cool things. And, you know, probably maybe you get to focus on four of them or, you know, like a much smaller number than you campaign on. But I, that's, I want to then come in, pick a smart handful of things that will really have high impact, but also have a good chance of attracting enough people within the office with some new leadership and some new tools to dig in and make change. So that's, that's my, you know, and I have, you know, one nice thing about a June primary is you get a lot more time to prepare and transition. I've done a little work. I've actually, I've talked to every living controller except Alan Hevesey, going all the way back to Jay Golden. And I've talked to a bunch of DEP former and current deputy controllers like Carol Kostick, who I'm guessing some of you know, who was the deputy controller for public finance for a bunch of years. So this, this will be hard work, but I'm, I, I, I think you can tell it's the kind of work I like to do. And we'll love to get in there and do it.
Well, look, I want to thank you. This has been a super informative, really interesting conversation. I think you, you're bringing a wealth of ideas and you're the first person running for elected office I've heard in 20 years who quotes Max Weber. So that's fantastic. So, and I just want to give you the opportunity to have the final word. Is there anything we haven't asked you or something that you want to conclude with?
Well, this has been a really fun conversation. And I guess what I'd say is like, um, if I have the good fortune to win, I would love to keep this relationship going. You know, I have put a lot in the idea that, you know, of the many different ideas, one of the few, one of the ones that I know I'm going to prioritize, really it's overlapping, but that the work on infrastructure, the work on contracting improvements and the work on climate. And, you know, obviously some of these housing and planning issues are going to be very important to me. So to do that well, it's got to be done in in really close dialogue with the folks who are in the systems, those systems every day and know what's not working and have creative ideas. So, um, you know, would love your support in the race and as you're making your decision about who to rank and what to encourage to your neighbors, but then especially afterwards, um, you know, would love to continue this conversation and look for the long term.
Great. That's fantastic. Well, thank you so much and thank everyone for joining. It's a fascinating race and I hope we all participate both in the race and as you say, after for the continued benefit of our city. So, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Be with you.
Thank you.